Well, 7 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the first meeting of the year, January 2nd to order. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone here a very happy, healthy, New Year.
Happy New Year to you too, and everybody.
So with the secretary being out, we have no minutes, so we'll postpone the minutes till the next meeting.
Okay.
And the motion?
So moved.
Second, motion passes, 3 to 0. Chairman's update, we'll move through that. I have nothing at this time. Consulting engineer, Kevin?
Beyond the items were discussed tonight, we received DPRC comments, response for the Cowloon on December 17th, so those are under review. Aside from that, nothing new to report.
Subdivisions or review?
No, no change in activity.
No change, okay.
We haven't received anything yet for the facility that's going up on Hamilton Street? It's supposed to be coming soon, I didn't know.
No?
Last meeting Nancy didn't have any new, I think she has an A and R, but I'm not even sure.
Okay.
So having no subdivision submissions, no site land divisions, we can move, take a motion for a small break, although we have our first meeting.
Why, it's not a, is that?
It's a continued public hearing.
Yeah, but it's continued, so there's no time, right? It's just continued, so we could start it now.
We can go if the applicant doesn't mind. Okay. So we have a continued public hearing on Collins Ave, Essex Landing. Attorney Richard Beggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Richard Beggan with Office 194 Central Treaty in Sarus, representing the applicant. Obviously, the board is quite familiar with this application and project. The continued public hearing is listed as definitive subdivision approval, but also pending before you, and I don't know exactly what the status is with the board, is a modification of the master plan and site plan, which I think is still being reviewed. Also with me here this evening is Mike Tuchet, principal of the project and owner, Paul Machana, the engineer on the project, and Sean McCormick from Davis Malm, Boston counsel for the project. Where we left this, I believe, was you referred it to your special counsel, Attorney Schumer, who came back with some comments. I believe we tried to address those comments, and I'm not sure exactly where the board is now in terms of asking questions to you, to the engineer or to us.
We haven't got all the comments due to people being sick, holidays, so we don't have any comments back from legal counsel at this time, but the board may have some questions.
But I spoke to Mr. Chair, I spoke to special counsel today, asking him if he had, you know, everything ready, because I thought we'd be ready to go for this, so we could vote it tonight. He said that he was not quite done answering that please comment, and he would have something back to us if we could continue it to the very next meeting, then we would be ready to go, and we would be able to vote it and have the decision written out. But I don't see any problem.
Maybe you can help the board a little bit. So I've read through the court order.
The decision of the in-court?
This is the court order, and I'm having a hard time understanding why we're going to go to a subdivision when the court order already says that they're frozen to a 20-unit perica situation at this time. That's what they're asking for. That's my belief, the way I'm understanding it. So why, if you approve to, in the court order, to put it through as assisted living, why are we going through this formality?
Well, I think the objective of the court action was to have the court make a determination, because our zoning bylaws don't have a definition of assisted living units.
But they do grant it within the court.
Well, they...
So we can't change what the court is?
Right. So the court found that assisted living shouldn't count against density, but independent living would. So Wingate, who is the joint venture to be, said they would all, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, on this, that they were going to make it all assisted living units. But the point of the...
That's the understanding that the board has, and I don't mean to talk for the board, but if this is the time to ask the questions, that it's 210 units assisted living. However, this board has not received one document stating that that's what this is going to be before the subdivision change. It would help to see something in writing, it would help to understand it a little bit better, there are some violations up there, we thought we were going to get a parking change, we told us by the first of the year, we would see something on parking, to take care of the existing or the old problem.
What would you, I understand what you're trying to say, John, I'm sorry.
Name and address.
Mr. Chairman, it's not a time.
The court order was based that...
Mike, would you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm Mike Tuchet, owner of Essex Landing, Sarus. The court order says that it was clarifying the zoning, but since that time, the zoning has changed, so we're trying to get clarification that we can come in under that zoning. We can't show you a plan until we know what zoning we're coming into. So by filing the subdivision plan, it locks in the zoning for us. We have the plan of the assisted living all done, the site plan and the master plan changes that were required, you know, like we talked about in previous meetings. But we can't submit that plan because it doesn't meet the zoning that's in place today. So the subdivision...
So the zoning that's in place today is 30 units perica?
No, no, it's 15, and the setbacks are different.
I'm sorry, I take that back.
Yeah.
You first built.
It was 30, right.
2015.
Yep.
2023, it changed to 20.
Right. But that's in the residential use, I'm not a lawyer, but that states that we don't fall under residential zoning. But for zoning purposes, we have to know the setbacks of the building and all that stuff, and the parking requirements, so we can't submit a plan to you unless we understand what zoning we're filing under. So all we're asking for, we're trying to use a tool that the state gives us to use to lock in the zoning, that we filed the subdivision plan on time, so we can come back here as soon as possible with the master plan and the buildings that are already done.
Again, I'm not...
Yep.
Well, when I read through it, it says that we can't hold you to the 15 now, because this is a quota for 20.
I don't understand that part of it, I'm sorry, Joe, I'm not a lawyer, I just...
Well, I think the purpose of the, and we all know the purpose of the definitive subdivision plan was to freeze the zoning, to give the applicant the maximum number under the then-existing zoning. If you don't, even if you don't take action on the subdivision, definitive subdivision plan, the protection of the freeze is still going to be there, so it allows the applicant to have maximum more.
Is there an agreement in line with Wingate right now to come in and do something, to do this assisted living?
Yes, we have a signed P and S.
Did I ask you to bring that so that we could see it? I mean, it's just proof in the... Let's say that they don't come in. Let's say for some reason, just like the hotel at the last minute, they backed out of the deal.
Okay.
Then you're frozen to 20 units.
Then we'd have to, no, this has nothing to do with the residential component. We'd have to come back for another master plan to go back to hotels or something else. I can provide the board a copy of the P and S agreement.
That would help.
Yes, that's not an issue.
I've kind of given you my wallet and charge cards and saying, okay, and then you get down the street and say, I got it all, we don't have to do it.
We weren't, we didn't start coming here with this stuff until we had the agreement signed with a deposit. So now we're here under a timeline, which I thought we explained to the board last time, that we have, and we'll provide that to you tomorrow.
You explained that in the DPCR, I don't think the board understood that.
Oh, okay.
Not all board members go to the...
Okay, so we can provide you with that, that we do have an agreement, and as long as we meet the timelines, that deal is going through. We have no other, not entertaining on any other things. This is the path we want to go down, and we think it's the best path for that land.
What's your timeline, if I may ask?
I don't off the top of my head, to be honest with you. I know we have like six months, I think, from now to get the master plan and the site plan approved.
You said you have that already.
What's that?
You have it already to go.
We have everything. We have the buildings, so at that meeting, that their team would come, and just happens that Paul Feldman is representing me and them, Paul Machana, the engineer, is working for both teams, so there's no conflict of where the pipe is, where the building is elevation. So we have all that, their architect is done with enough information for this board.
Understood.
The site plan's done, the drainage is done, the sewer tightens, all that stuff we have, I could give it to you tomorrow, but we can't give it to you until we understand that it meets the zoning.
Okay, I got that.
Yep.
So what happens with all these temporary parking lots? Where are you going to put the...
We're going to show you on the new master plan.
So you were going to...
We have 87 extra parking spots on our new plan, more than zoning, so we're going to, that was the agreement we made back in August to come back in here.
The first of the year, you were going to provide us with the parking plan, you said.
Right, but we've been stalled for like three months, yeah.
That just lets us know that we can't give you permission to go ahead and put a building up, and this will take place once the plan is submitted, but just...
But say we did a 7-Eleven, the parking's going to change, so the master plan I'm going to present to you...
Mike's not doing the 7-Eleven.
No, but that's going to solve the parking problem, is on that plan. We told this board last time, we have 180-something parking spots under the garage, we have an extra 47 on surface now, because we're only building one building instead of three buildings that are on the master plan. The parking garage now is under the building, there's five stories above the assisted living, and the other building goes away. So we've created more parking in the new master plan that we're going to come to you with, and that gets rid of the temporary parking spots.
I believe I asked this question in the past. How many dedicated spaces do you need for the assisted living itself?
I don't know that answer.
Okay.
Yeah, you can answer it, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Machana from the Schon Associates. So when we discuss this, I think at the last hearing, you don't have assisted living, you know, parking requirement in your zoning. So the experience from the assisted living developers that we work with is one space for every two units, so half a space per unit.
Well, if we don't have it, who made that law?
There's not a law, it's what their experience is. You don't have anything in your regulations.
The building inspector is the zoning inspector.
So the building inspector agreed with that.
Would make a decision on what parking code.
And I believe at the DPCR meeting, Richard, he asked for this also?
I don't remember.
Mike LeVega?
Yes, he did, absolutely, Mr. Brian. He asked for that, and we said when we would come to our first meeting, he was going to bring paperwork from other sites that they have done. You absolutely...
But you also along with Wingate offered the members of that meeting to take a ride and a visit to one of their other facilities?
And this board, and anybody else.
And it hasn't happened yet.
No, because we can't come here with that presentation until we know...
Well, there's already preliminaries. The plan you brought before the DPCR said, bad plan that was standard for construction purposes, and the first thing I brought out to you, if this is for construction, Mike, why do we have 75 two-bedroom units listed within that facility? It's on the back page. If you haven't done anything, it existed, it existed. It's in your legend.
I don't understand that question, to be honest with you.
Could you show us that?
I don't have the plans, the plans...
Well, you must have seen them.
I did see them, I just, I'm telling you, it was on the last page of his plans.
I think you brought it up at the meeting, and they explained something. We're not, I'm not here representing them tonight. They have their own team, they're going to explain all that to you.
They're going to explain that when we go for the market.
I think we're a little ahead of ourselves, because unless we get the definitive subdivision plan approved, none of this is...
That's the first cross step of that process.
Right, you can't do any of this without that.
We understand that.
And you asked for...
Jesse's supposed to provide us with something in writing. I asked him today, I thought it was going to be, and I apologize, because I didn't find out till 5 o'clock that he didn't have it to us yet, I've been in a class for the last couple of days. So when I mentioned it to him, I said, should we reach out to you and say, maybe you'll come tonight, because we're going to have to ask for continuance, till we get that in writing from Jesse? And then he thought we had to vote in public to continue it to the next meeting anyway, so I was going to try to save you a trouble coming.
We answered all his questions.
He assured me that we should be ready to go at the very next meeting, which is in two weeks. We meet again in January, and he assured me that we should be ready.
Then we should continue till next meeting, and I will provide a copy that's not for public use of the P and S agreement, that we have a deal, you know, with...
But this is the agreement, you don't have to press anything on it, you can blank it out, we don't care if you make 2 million, 3 million.
No, no, they ain't really going to break it even, but I'm just saying, yeah, I'll give you that.
Whatever it might be, I just need an agreement.
Yep, we'll give you that.
So...
Sure, I understand, but put the board's mind at ease, that you're going to prove something, this is what's going to happen. So we'll give you that for the next meeting, and hopefully we answered all Jesse's questions, which I think we did, because everything he asked for, we have done right, as far as filing the subdivision plan, I haven't heard differently that we didn't. So we'll provide that, we'll come back to the next meeting, and then we're going to get on as soon as we can to present to this board of what we're going to do.
For the modifications.
Modification of the master plan, like we talked with Jesse in August, and he said that we could bring the temporary parking lots with the new modification all at one meeting, so everybody understood what we were doing. And that's what we have done on the new master plan. So those temporary parking lots go away, we have plenty of extra parking, we have more covered parking now, we have a great plan, with a great provider that's going to run a great facility up there. And I'm sure the town will be happy, Wingate is a very good company, and like I said, they have their own group, their architect's going to talk for themselves, who came to the meeting, their lawyer, they're in, no, we have our engineer, but we're going to provide all that, once we know what path we're going down, and hopefully in the next meeting, we'll know where the subdivision...
You just said the key word, once we know what path we're going down.
Right.
Well, we don't know that path until we act on the definitive subdivision plan.
Right.
Which we can't do until they continue it here.
So before we get into that, and in these past meetings, I don't believe you attended to, we asked him for a parking plan for the whole complex. How is this going to work?
It won't matter if the definitive subdivision plan isn't approved.
Well, it does matter, because he's in violation of all his parking right now.
I know, but we agreed in August to come in.
Yeah, but you agreed, you told us, I'm just talking...
Jesse was sitting there, I was speaking, we agreed in August that we were going to come in with the new master plan, when we show you what we want to build, and this is not a fairy tale building, this is what we want to build, and that's going to lock in the master plan to show the parking that we need.
Okay.
That's...
Mike, you good, man?
So, yeah.
This is the legend that came with, this one's a little bit different than the big set of plans. What's that say, two-bedroom assisted living?
So they're going, they'll, I don't know, yeah, I don't understand that, because we talked about that spare room at the meeting.
That was one, those are the one and a half, so you got one bedrooms, then one and a half.
Okay, so they're calling it a two-bedroom.
All I know is the bed count is like 2 something, based upon economics. So they told us in that DCPR meeting that, based on, you know, 100 rooms, it doesn't work, 300 rooms, it doesn't work, so they have that sweet number of 211 or 212 rooms. But they're going to come present that here. What, you know, once we have them...
So we have a little bit better understanding, at least.
So we'll show you that we have an agreement, we'll come to the next meeting, hopefully the subdivision plan gets approved, we're never going to build it, it's a tool to lock in the zoning, and then we're going to come as quick as we can, we have all the drawings ready, as soon as this board can hear from us, we're going to come in and start that procedure. And hopefully we'll take two meetings, three meetings, or whatever, and have our site visit during that timeframe. Because like Rich said, it doesn't matter talking about it now, because if we don't get the zoning that we need, then that building gets shrink, and that, they go away, or we have to build two buildings, they go away, then I got to start over with hotels or whoever else wants to buy the land. Because our residential component is used up up there, and that's what it is. So that's what was the judgment was about, not about anything else, it was to say that, hey, this doesn't fall under residential component, they're allowed to build that. So we're allowed to build it, it's just now, do we stay 50 feet from the lot line, 15 feet, it comes down to the zoning thing. So if we have to go to today's zoning, it's going to become a different complex, and they won't be able to build it.
Sean, you have anything to say?
Well, according to the Land Court, you definitely can tell.
I understand what you're saying, the Land Court said that, but in the meantime, if the zoning didn't change, we wouldn't be here tonight, we would already submit...
The only way we would change this ruling is if Wingate backs out.
Yeah, I don't understand that part of it, I know, I know, that judge, so I'll just come in with the plan and you approve it, if that, no, I don't understand, I understand what you're saying.
What you're saying, you don't understand, we don't understand, that's why I'm asking for confirmation.
Well, I got this team behind me that's telling me we have to be here tonight to get the zoning locked in.
We understand.
So we can submit a plan that they can write a zoning thing, opinion, and we can build this thing. Without the right zoning, Rich can't write a zoning opinion.
Richard, can, I'll ask you, being a town attorney, if there's a zoning change, doesn't it have to go before town meeting?
It was already changed.
No, they're just freezing it, they're not changing the zoning.
We're freezing, we're not changing.
Okay, okay.
So under the law, subdivision to a law, in mass statutes...
It's the only way of doing it.
Correct. It protects a developer from a freeze, a freeze from a change in the zoning that may be to their detriment, if they do it correctly. But, so that's why this definitive subdivision plan, which was preceded by a preliminary subdivision plan, has got to be...
A master plan.
Acted upon. But then the master plan and the site plan review...
Yep.
...modification comes before you, but they can't, we can't really discuss all of this, until we know the zoning is frozen.
Yep.
Which apparently will happen.
Next meeting.
Some action will be there.
Yeah, I apologize, I thought it was going to, I thought we were going to have it today, so when I went looking for it in my emails, and then I said, I called it off.
Usually it would...
The thing is, we started this journey...
Usually when I get it, I send it.
Under that zoning, we started this journey in that zoning, then the zoning got changed so quick, that instead of getting rid of them, we're trying to lock in the zoning that we started investing a lot of money into. You know, you know what I'm saying? So when we started this process with them two and a half years ago, we based it upon that zoning, they did a study, which they explained to you at the DCPR meeting, that, you know, in the study called for this area, and it was a very good study, and, you know, all that, so we're going down that track, then all of a sudden, the zoning changed. So we can't change that track, so like I said, there's a tool in the Commonwealth that lets us lock in the zoning, so the money that we've spent and invested and all that, hopefully we continue through with that zoning.
Believe me, everybody wants to see the assisted living, especially versus hotels.
We just want, right, we want to do it once.
Yep. So as soon, like I said, we have everything done, as soon as we know what avenue we're going down, we're coming in, maybe the next meeting or the meeting after, to present this board, to start that process, John, with the master plan revisions and the site plan revision, and that's going to show you that we're going to take care of the whole site, and it's going to be completed. So at that point, and if they didn't go through with this deal, we'd have to come back and start over again with another master plan, because that wouldn't be the building we'd be using.
So what we're asking the board, as it has suggested, is to continue this hearing until its next meeting for action on the definitive subdivision approval, based upon special counsel's recommendations to you, which date would be?
I'm going to look right now, sorry.
16th.
The 16th, yep.
16th?
So before we do that, does anyone else have any questions?
Isn't this really, we're talking about the subdivision presently exists, okay? What would prevent you or anybody from going ahead and telling us exactly what you want to do with assisted living? Coming up here and giving us something from the people who are going to manage it, okay? And what's going to be the drag on local community services, what's your staffing going to be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? No, we're something that's blown out. If we sign an extension right now, this is nothing more than when you first came to us with a proposal, we're going to put a hotel here, we're going to put apartments here, we're going to do this. What I'm saying is, you really don't need an extension to come forward and tell us exactly what you want to do. If you tell us what you want to do exactly, we can vote the extension, so you can go ahead and do it.
We can't tell you exactly what we're going to do, unless we know that the zoning is frozen, but it's the definitive subdivision application that's pending.
And only does board...
What part of the frozen zoning is it that bothers you?
The density in terms of the number of units, setbacks, side adds, there are a number of things that change.
The number of units, if I understand...
Dimensional, more than anything.
Even though it's not by law, the number of units tied in with hospitals, right?
No.
Aren't they?
We had a very good DPRC meeting with all the department heads, many of the town people.
Right now, you're currently built up on the original zoning.
No, we're not, just in the residential component.
Yeah.
Yes, we are built up, otherwise, if I wasn't, I'd be asking for apartment buildings, the business I'm in, so instead I have to sell off the land, and we don't want to put hotels there. Things have changed in six years since we've been there, since COVID, the hotel business, the problems on Route 1. So we're looking for a better source. I could make a deal tomorrow with the confident, there's no question about it. They will come tomorrow, you know, but you're going to get $110 a night, it's going to be not good for the community. So we're trying to bring in a good vendor, that's going to spend a lot of money, the Wingate Group, and we're trying to put a good vendor up there that's going to run a top-notch facility. And yes, there are stuff that does to the community, if you put a hotel on there, there's more police and fire. When you, we talked about this in the DCPR meeting, so there's sways for each thing, we don't add to the school system. So there are sways, we talked about that at meeting, we can't talk about it yet in front of this board until we know what we're talking about.
By the way, do you guys have a bond, do we have a bond for your fellow?
For what?
For their construction and everything.
You don't need, it's private property.
Was ever a...
Not a public job.
Because you own the property, we don't need a bond for you to complete it?
Nope.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We only need a bond on public property?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
On public jobs.
Really?
Yeah, the town wouldn't go in and finish my building if I didn't finish it, the bank would.
That's not true.
What?
Absolutely not true.
Okay.
And Richard, you should know this, that behind the...
I didn't say anything, Bob, so...
Because behind the target, that subdivision which was on private land, we had a bond, the guy was bankrupt, couldn't finish it, and we won, and the bond was dropped and was forfeited.
So what happens under definitive subdivision approval? The town would look for some kind of surety for the performance of that definitive subdivision plan. So then if the developer doesn't go for it, they would have security to finish what needed to be done. In this case, because it's a definitive subdivision plan for zoning freeze only, we still may ask, you still may ask for a surety, but it's never, the subdivision as proposed is never going to be built the way it's proposed, it's just to freeze the zoning. When we come before you before a modification of master plan and site plan, I expect that the board will be asking for some surety, for some surety.
You're going through a lot of stuff, I argue. What happens...
Then you don't have to ask me.
What happens within the development, if the roads aren't completely, and you kind of take a walk? Who pays for those?
Well, I was going to finish and say, when we come before you for modification of master plan and site plan approval, this board can look for surety for some guaranteed performance to protect the town.
If my site doesn't get finished today, it has nothing to do with the town. Do we have...
Well, it does, because you've got another project pending, Mike.
What do you mean?
Over the hill from you. That will not go if there's no Collins Ave that's going to put in.
No, no, no. Collins Ave is there, that's kind of...
It's a separate project, it's managed, but...
Okay, we're getting way off, this project is going to get completed.
No, I know, but what I'm saying, if you don't finish Collins Ave...
Collins Ave is a private way, there's no, there's nothing here that's in public...
When we get to the, what are you trying to say? When we get to that part of the process?
That all come up?
We will ask for that, we ask for that, you have to follow the process.
We have to get there first.
This is the first step, and then we're going to get to those steps, and we will cross that bridge when it comes.
By the time we get from beginning to end, nobody will remember what even happened in the middle, that's what I've seen.
Speak for yourself.
You got a building project over by John, which is 15 feet on setback coming back down.
We're going to keep track of it, we're keeping track of it.
We are?
Yeah.
Not anyone on this?
Different board.
Well, I don't know about it.
You're right in what you're saying, but it's a different board, that was on all the board.
By the way, what is the zoning on aggregate?
Zoning, that's industrial, all industrial in the front. It would be to, you know, high-rise business.
So there's no residential on that, what's that?
Not right now, but there's a whole committee that's planning on a mixed-use development in there.
They meet in February, I'll let you know, and you can go to the meeting. If we focus you over to aggregate, they are meeting, they do, I'm on that committee, I'll let you know.
I am going to amend chapter 21, when you guys get together with all your department heads, that that be televised and available to all members of boards and commissions.
You go for it.
You bet your life on it.
Let's get back on track here. You want, do you want to just accept the...
You need that in a form of a motion to continue the public hearing?
It probably should happen in a motion, because it is a public hearing.
Well, I think Jesse mentioned that, that you should need to have a vote to continue.
Correct.
Yep, so I'll make the motion to continue this public hearing until January 16th.
Wait a second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, if this is a public hearing, why isn't it on last month's agenda, as a public hearing?
It was, it's a continued public hearing.
They weren't at last month, last meeting, you were at the meeting before that, we continued it for two meetings away, they weren't at the very last one.
To give people time to redo what we...
Yes.
For Jesse to ask for the stuff, yep.
This is December 19th.
And I apologize that he didn't get it done, it's just probably because of the holidays.
This was a tough day, I didn't think anyone was going to come today, when we set it up.
I didn't want them.
I don't think, I think a couple people might have forgotten to.
No, no, it was a tough day, I was surprised, you know, but that's fine, that's great.
So we apologize, but we will be ready to move on the 16th. I was trying to make a motion, I will continue to make my motion.
I'll make the second motion, all in favor?
Did somebody second the motion?
I did.
Okay, aye.
Aye. Mr. Wong? You all set? Motion passes, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
If you have any of that information...
I will get you that information that we talked about.
And.
Yep.
I think you know by now what.
And you saw a sneak peek of the plan at the D C P R meeting.
Who?
When you were at the D C P R meeting, you got a sneak plan of all the site plan and everything.
It was a half hour late.
Oh.
Because I still, I still do construction.
So I can get you those two copies to you, and it shows off the record everything that's gonna be coming in front of the board.
Yeah.
Which looks promising.
I missed, I missed Mr. Feldman's, Attorney Feldman's son. I didn't know he was part of Wingate.
Well, no, no, no.
Oh, it is.
No, different Feldman.
See, I walked, when I walked in, I didn't put it all together.
No, David Feldman's their construction supervisor. He's their construction supervisor. Architect is from Charles Town. And then Paul Feldman just had, is gonna be representing both parties, so there's no crossover on the P and S and all that. So I'll provide the board with that, and then we'll talk.
P and S.
Yeah, we'll get it to you, and you can get it to them. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a great New Year.
I'll be back.
See you later.
Before we go.
You didn't get to speak, I'm sorry.
I'm disappointed you didn't get to speak.
Successful meeting. I don't like to say anything if I can't approve.
Thank you.
Take care.
Before we go, as a reminder to the board, we're holding a bond on Riverside. Okay, that's private property. So the.
No, we can, we can ask for a bond, but at that time, we don't have a bond before it starts.
He's not a hundred percent right, but I can't hide you something that he's not right on.
Well, at least there's a couple of bonds I know about that were done in the past. One we had to actually.
All your subdivisions are on private property, and they're required to put up a bond because of the road.
Subdivision.
That's why I brought.
A playground?
I brought.
Okay, we're still rolling, and we, we continue that, so we shouldn't continue to talk about it.
The next meeting is a formal, an informal discussion with Canes.
Raising Canes.
Raising Canes.
Raising Canes.
On Broadway, representing the client is Mr. Attorney Richard Bag.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board again. For the record, Attorney Richard Bag, on 194 Central Street here in Saugus, representing Raising Canes. We're here on modification of site plan and master plan with revisions that were submitted to you. Both in letter form and in plan forms circulated. We suggested relatively minor recommendation, excuse me, revisions. In that this board could vote, if it so choose, that it does not require a further public hearing because of the fact that they're not detrimental or substantial. And I think a question arose about the location of the pump chamber, which is the, an additional revision here. And I did have the Nicholas execute a grant of easement for the operation use of that, which I will give to the board. And Matt Ashley from Bowler Engineering will just go through quickly the revisions.
Thanks, Rich. Matt Ashley with Bowler, Route 52 Turnpike, South Borough, Mass. Thanks for meeting with me again here. I think what makes sense is I'm just gonna run through. I think we had some, a couple of questions. Leaving here, I went back with the full force main designer, also connected with Kevin, Tetra Tech, everyone that we kinda talked about, so I can just run through that quickly. The first question that the board had was about the bent right here. And if we could do a sweeping elbow versus a 45, working with the pump manufacturer and everyone. They didn't have any objections to the 45 degree bend, but the sweeping elbow, they were fine with too. So we did update the plan to be a sweeping elbow, so there's not that hard 45 degree there anymore. The second question we had was, we did propose to remove that manhole. And not have that there anymore, as it was just a force main. The board asked if the manufacturer designer would recommend putting in some type of a clean out port or inspection port there. The response I got back from the designer was they did not have any, they would not recommend having something there given the length of the force main. What they did recommend as a belt and suspenders type of approach is to have a clean out at the end of the force main line. Which is in our detail already. So if there was something that would have to be done, we can access it from both sides of the force main. Though they said they don't even anticipate that being needed for the general maintenance of the pump station. What else we got here? Oh, board's preference would be to have Tetra Tech take a look at it. Steven from Tetra Tech was so kind enough to take a look at this before he went on holiday break and get back to me with all his questions. He had four questions for the area. First was making sure that the pump station, who would be responsible for the maintenance, which was a question of the board in general. That'd be for the full maintenance would be for Raising Canes, the applicant, not the town or D P W's work. Rich talked about comment number two, about having in the, an agreement in place for the location of the pump chamber. Making sure that the landowner and everyone's okay with that. Rich said, just to reiterate, that he'd circulate that signed easement agreement between the applicant and the landowner. Discharge location, just asking if it changed from anything before. This is the same location discharge from the gravity line. And then the last question he had here was just making sure, I think this was also a comment of the board, that there's a redundancy duplex system out here. So both of the pumps get exercised, which they are. It'd be two pumps and they'll rotate usage, so everything stays maintained. So that was the questions that we circulated back to the board. And then Kevin was also very nice enough to do a deep dive history into this job as he came in kind of at the end and was asked to take a look at everything. So he circulated a couple of questions to me that we went back and forth on. And one thing I just wanted to cover with the board was about, you know, the reason why we're switching to the force main. Which I believe I went into some detail last hearing, but just to talk about it again. This was a result of when they started construction of this. We did find an electrical line when they did some further S U E investigations. That was right on the route of the gravity sewer main. So essentially what ended up happening is the gravity sewer line came in right at the electric line. This electric line happened to be running right across a stormwater pipe that was underneath it. So when we did G P R it, we did identify utility there. However, we identified it as the stormwater pipe that runs underneath. We did video camera it. And then when the G C, per the order of our conditions, they had to investigate further, they found this later down the road.
Question?
Yes.
And thanks for Kevin's awareness. Why do we ever change the sewer line from the back of the building to the front of the building? It never came back before this board for a modification.
Yeah, so good question. So we did submit back the fully updated plans with it swapping to the front to the board.
Was it a red line drawing?
Um.
No.
I, I don't recall. It was a while ago, but I'm sure you know the answer to that. If you say it's no, I'm sure it's no then. But that was a result of ongoing utility coordination that we were doing with D P W and engineering. We went out and identified a bunch of utilities that were running down this way over here. There, I think there was gas, water, electric. And for the run that we had to make, we just couldn't make it work with the elevations with all those existing utilities there. So we did swap it to the front. And then also for the grease trap location, it did make it a little easier for maintenance out front as well. But that was the reasoning for the switch that we showed in the plans from the initial submission to later on. Good question, though.
And you worked with Larry on that?
Yep, that was Larry, yep, so.
Kevin, didn't you go through all of Larry's notes, and there's no indication that, there's talk of it, but nothing, Larry can't give permission?
Right, and part of my review of this was to just try and mimic what was done on the six inch gravity. And it was during that that I realized that this revision from April or as recent as October of 23. I know the planning board didn't approve till January 24, but, you know. Whatever logic moved it from out back to out front and created this easement, which, you know. The old design did not have the electrical conflict. But aside, you know, and that's part of the difficulty, because some of the changes weren't documented between onsite coordination. And may not have got identified when the full set came back to the planning board. You know, it just makes it a little more difficult. You know, the concept is, is fine, but trying to mirror the logic to date is tough. Not, not seeing a definitive reason why, you know, it was moved from out back to out front. Larry had no kind of report on it. I just noticed in, in the revision and that, you know, this, there's been nine revisions to the utility plan. So.
And I don't think we've had one red line revision, one change and red line come back to this board, so. So it makes it a little bit difficult being the board. And then being accountable to engineering and the D P W. You guys didn't get any changes, so. And this is what I was getting at earlier with, with the applicant before you, so. It's just, we're just trying to tighten the ship up. You bring it in, we can get it out, you know what I'm saying? But if it's not there, we're, we're in ghostland.
No, yeah, I mean, we, we did resubmit the, the final plan to the planning board, and that was the one that was approved. I agree that we probably didn't have the red line planned. Maybe that's what you were looking for.
Correct.
But it was, we, I, we were following what we, the direction that we got, and that was according on the utilities with Larry.
What was the date of that, that meeting?
Was it?
I think we approved in January, and we submitted the final set on 12/22. And we got approved January 3rd or 4th or something, I wanna say.
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
12th, okay.
Yeah.
So Larry was still there then, right? Larry was still here.
Larry was there, yeah, and that's why I brought to their attention. Larry shows no documentation of that change, so no question on the change.
Kevin, are you satisfied with these, the new plans, the way they have this sewer going now? Do you see any issues with that?
Like I said, I'm good with the concept. My, my concern now is that I just wanna make sure that. Whatever satisfied the D P W before is done with this new two inch line. But then, you know, I, I am also concerned for the future if there's a four inch electrical line that everyone knows where that is. So, yeah, I guess if the board is okay and acknowledges that there already has been a change in the sewer layout.
So we have permission to put the, the tank in the middle of the right of way. That's been signed by, I believe, the Two Brothers. We have indication in writing from Canes Chicken that they will own this pipe.
And you, did you say there's a pump now?
They will maintain it. There's two pumps.
Two, there wasn't two pumps before.
Originally, when it was first designed, there were no pumps.
So is the town have an issue with the pumps, or they're gonna own them privately?
They're gonna own the pumps privately down to the first catch basin that the town is responsible for. And then they're gonna own, should there be a backup in that catch basin, they would own having that cleaned as well. Am I correct? Is that, is that proper?
Who else is tying up this thing? Currently is, the Route 1 Grill House is.
So they have their own, own discharge line that goes out back as well?
We both tie into the same manhole.
They both tie in, but there are two separate lines going down.
Correct.
They have a pump too?
I, I can't speak to them if they have a pump or not. I don't believe they do, but I, I can't say for sure.
Does this go down to Forest Street?
This goes out back down to Nicoli Drive, and then I forget what's out behind Nicoli Drive, what that connects to.
Forest Street, which goes to Forest Street.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just was trying to review, you know, before if they said, you know, a pressure test is required or a dye test. You know, some of the, some of the requirements that I was gonna simply mimic from the earlier plan. Cause I'm, I'm okay with the concept, you know, I, like you mentioned, having Tetra Tech look at it for, you know, pump curves and things like that. You know, I just wanna, it's just gonna take a little longer to vet out that, you know. All the steps that were made before are done, just because some of the field discussion and approvals weren't documented. But between the right of way issue, if, if that's allowable, you know, I don't really have a problem. They, I know a big part is acknowledging that they would own it within the easement.
We have that in writing.
Not yet.
I, I think we submitted something to the town that said that they, you know, we would, Raising Canes would be.
To engineering?
I, I think it was part of our original application, I believe.
But the pumps weren't in the original application, then how would that be in there?
I'm sorry. Well, we resubmitted the updated materials that you see before you today. I'm happy to provide whatever we need in writing. I think we submitted a maintenance plan as well, what to expect out here. Happy to document that in other, whatever way is appropriate.
Do you have that, that documentation?
I have the grant of easement from the property owner, the Nicholas, to Raising Canes, to use the pump. But they're responsible to maintain, operate, so on and so forth. I, I think it would be a good idea if Bowler through Matt submits to the town a subsequent document. That acknowledges the private maintenance and performance of the pump station.
Yeah, that we would need that.
Yep, absolutely.
I, I think it'd also be good to know the depth of these electrical conflicts. You know, especially where, you know, the difference in a two inch to a four inch not being that big. But, you know, saying it's a, it's a conflict to dig for a six inch pipe, but, you know, it's not for a two inch. So that by definition would mean the electrical is within a couple inches of.
Yeah, so.
Utility.
If I can speak to that real quick. I did, we, we field verified the exact spot of the electrical line that's there. And the crown of that electrical line was measured at 77.03. And we're proposing our new two inch line because it's under pressure. We don't have to be at that exact elevation going out from the gravity. So we can be up higher, lower, whatever we want. And we're going up and above the electric line, what we're proposing. And there's about four to five inches above it, and that still provides five feet of cover over the force main as well in that location.
Did you mention too that the grease chap, grease trap location changed?
Yeah, from the side to the front of the building.
So has the, the board health been notified of that? Are they okay with that? Have they inspected that?
So just, just to be clear, we submitted back all of these changes, not, not the pump station, but the relocation and everything. Back with our final plan set to the planning board that got approved from the front to the back. On the 12/22 date, before we got approved on the next hearing with those updates. So none of these were field changes.
Go back to what I was saying. They weren't a red line change.
Correct, yeah. I'm, I'm with you on that one.
So if they weren't red lined, what, I'm just, I can't remember that far back off the top of my head without re going back and re watching the meeting. Were all these changes discussed at that meeting and brought to the table? So if they weren't, and you just changed it on a plan, that's the idea of the red line, to tell us, because it's kinda deceiving. You get a plan, you go through it, you spend months going through it, we talk about it, you present it, we approve it, and then you come back, you make changes, and you don't, you don't tell us those changes. Nobody's going up there and, and re inspecting all those lines up there. So that's the part that's, that's the problem. That's why you have to come back and tell us when you do these, because at the end of this project, when you bring your ass belt here, and you're not getting an occupancy without coming. and you're not getting an occupancy without coming back in doing your Asbilt and they don't line up, you're not getting the occupancy permit. So it really doesn't pay to go and do those things without getting the permission. And there's a reason why you have to do that. These things have to be vetted. We need to know about the grease trap. The inspectional services has to make sure that that's a good spot for that. And these things have to be vetted. Not just switch them around on a plan, throw it up here and then say, well, you guys signed off on it. That's kind of deceiving. And you guys have had some issues and I'm not saying you in general, but we've had some things here where we just think we're gonna do what we want. Like up at, you know, I won't name the place on Route 1, right across the way from you, where we just think we're gonna do what we want and nobody's gonna pay attention. Engineers change, board members change. You're not gonna slide through things through here without getting, going through the proper channels.
No, I, I a hundred percent agree. And that's not our intention as all. I mean, we're here in front of you talking about this.
Because Kevin pointed it out, is why. It was, these changes were kind of getting slipped under the rug. You didn't come here because you wanted to come here. So let's just lay that out there.
Okay, yeah, sorry, sorry for the confusion. Yeah, I, I thought we documented properly the change in coordination with all the departments.
If you did it properly, it would have been a red line change and you would have brought it to the board and you would have said, we're coming in for a modification vote, whether it's going to be major or minor. That's how you would have done it properly.
Well, no, we, we, it was even before we got our approval, we made all those changes and resubmitted everything. I, I, I agree. I'm not trying.
Larry was somebody that documented and redocumented and had notes for notes for notes, which I'm sure you.
Matt, what we're getting at, when you set a plan and we look at the first plan, we decide, okay, yeah, great use, boom, boom, boom. Two plans later, you make a change. We're already past that.
Gotcha.
So some things the board doesn't catch.
I, I think it was, it was just confusion on my part how we had to document that change. I, I, it was my understanding we submitted everything.
Genius saying, this has happened now on, I've been on the board with, with three of your, three of your projects. Don't want to mention where. And this is now be the third time. Your affiliate gave us a nice site view of another, another location. We went through the whole parking thing with them. Gave them the permit to go ahead. First meeting back, he's got a ten count change. It just can't happen like that.
So my, my point of this whole question is, so now you're looking for us to vote this tonight as a minor, but we don't even have any input from inspectional services on the location, the re, the new location of the grease trap?
So, yeah, sorry, yeah, back to the original point. All of these plans, as you see them today, not, not the pump station, but the routing and everything got submitted to inspectional services, health department. They saw all of everything where it lies.
And they, they were notified that there was a change in it. They didn't think that they were just looking at the same plan that we already looked at and everybody signed off on and then it came back in front of them. They were told that there was a change? Because it's the same thing that happened here. If we're not told there's a change.
Yeah.
We're not.
So I, I think the, the, my part where there was confusion on my end was I thought we submitted the final with the changes for the planning board for everyone to look at in those updates that we made from feedback that got approved. And I, I, I agree with you that we probably didn't have the red line from our initial submission to our second hearing when we came in with those updates. Um, I'm sure we talked about them. I, I can't say for sure. It was over a year or so ago. But they saw the same plan set that we submitted to the planning board on the 12/22.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. But what I'm saying to you, knowing Larry, the engineer at the time, as well as we knew him. He double crossed his Ts and double dotted his Is. And I don't see anything from Larry, so.
Yep, no, he.
And also, there's even from your end of why, you mentioned some utilities, but not a real defined reason of why it got moved. You know, because we're still crossing utilities. And, yeah, for that, it's hard to follow.
Well, there are more utilities through that parking lot. So we know that, and it's just not documented.
And I, I have not seen the, the GPR report or anything, or that's typically something that would get shared, but.
Did you say that Steve Bulley went through all these changes? And did he write us a report?
He did.
He did. Did you read it?
I, we, I didn't get any, any knowledge from Steve. Spoke with him this morning. I didn't get anything. He wasn't in his office. He was working from his home office. Uh, he was gonna talk to Tucker and try to get back to me before the meeting, his onsite engineer. I didn't hear from him. But he did, did tell me that there are other utility lines that run through that back parking lot that I've noted on the plan. So.
Okay, so does it, does it make sense to just continue this to the next meeting and then have two weeks to go through with all the proper departments and make sure that these changes are, are minor and okay? And if they are, that at the next meeting, we'll just approve them and move forward?
You could do that or you could, before an occupancy permit is, is granted, you would submit all these changes to the board to the.
But do you want to wait to that, you're that far into it to find out that they have an issue with where they put the grease trap or something?
It's, we got permission from the owner. We've got acceptability from Cane's, uh, Cane's Chicken.
But the grease trap as well? I mean, you're talking about the sewer moving, but what about the grease trap this?
It's, it's, it's all gonna be on them. They're gonna own the whole thing, right? Even when it hits the manhole down in Forest Street. If that, if that coagulates and freezes up that manhole, it's gonna be on Cane's to have it, have it cleaned. That's in the documentation. That's what.
We don't even have that in documentation. We're talking about getting that in documentation. We don't have that right now.
We have the easement from the.
We have the property owner saying he's okay with it, but we don't have anything saying that they own this for the town. We don't have anything, any documentation protecting the town right now.
And all I'm saying is that we could make this a set of conditions before an occupancy permit. Now the onus is on them.
But we've already, we've already given them their approvals.
We gave them.
I mean, you're gonna, they're gonna do it for an occupancy permit. You're gonna put conditions then? I mean, it seems a little too late to do it then. I would, seems like those issues should be addressed now. That's just my opinion.
I don't disagree, but.
I mean, you're talking two weeks, just go, have them go through it. I personally, if, if Tetra Tech did a report, I, I would like to see what he found in there.
But I have one more question before we do anything. You did give us a red line drawing in the last meeting. Not only on the injector pump, but I believe something on the right of way that was never explained to us.
I think I went over at the beginning part and then we got focused on the sewer. But I, I'd be happy to go over it again.
Would you do that, please?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
So the second part of this was, I'm gonna get away from the mic. You're not gonna like that. Is, we've had some ongoing coordination with the, um, the operator to our, I'm gonna say a plan left here on some improvements that were proposed on their site that we brought in before the planning board and was approved. Since, uh, ongoing construction, um, there's been a lot of coordination between Raising Cane's and the, um, Route 1 Grill owner, operator, um, and landowner, who is also our landowner, uh, about what they actually want to see here. And essentially, um, they don't want us to do those improvements over there. They want to keep it as is and currently operating. So we don't want to argue with what they want and how they want to run their business. So essentially what we just had to do was shift everything over slightly a couple of feet to realign this driveway here. So we're just shifting the driving aisle, um, the striping, um, and then up front just for a little better connectivity, this, uh, island up front's just getting a little smaller, all within our property, nothing within the right of way.
Kevin, do you have any issues with the modification of the driveway? Did that, did that go back before the DOT? There was, there was a, an issue, I believe, earlier on on the size of the egress coming and going?
We went back to, um, well, we notified DOT when we were starting the work within the right of way. And they wanted us to change some traffic patterns on how stuff was coming in and out during construction of that, uh, which we made the, or the traffic engineer made updates to his plan essentially with them for that. And that's what we notified and made updates for, or they did, I should say.
And was the abutter previously okay with the old design? I mean, doesn't it seem late? You know, did, did they agree to something and then as it was being built, realized that they want it changed or?
That, that's my understanding, yeah, as stuff was getting built out there and how, you know.
Was it something to do with planters? Planters were gonna be placed upon their parking, may have screwed up their parking spaces or?
It was, yeah.
I got a phone call from, uh, the operator of, of Route 1 Grill House. And he brought this to my attention. And I said, well, let me, let me run it through our engineer on site. And I thought it was all, all taken care of because it never came back up until last week. It's why I brought it forward tonight.
Yeah, yeah. So it had to do with the parking and how this area kind of operates and people coming in and onto their property as access, because it's kind of, that's kind of, I think, what a lot of people do today is they come on here and go this way. So you just wanted to make sure that was kind of maintained for what's going on in there. So all we're doing is just keeping the existing conditions over there and just shifting everything so it functions a little better on our side. But otherwise, no, no updates to their side.
Has this been presented to the onsite, our onsite, uh, engineer?
Tetra Tech?
Yeah.
I believe I sent this over to them or they did, but I, I can't say for sure. I can double check.
Yep, you would, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those, uh, changes on the, the access area were done at the request of, of the abutter. Yeah, Route 1 Grill House.
You were part of that? Yep. All right, well, what's the wish for the board?
And that's, you, you mentioned the DOT. Does that, do they have to re-approve any sort of, um, like curb cut plan or?
I don't know. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Uh, we checked with their traffic and they said that everything's within our site and nothing's changing in the right of way. So they, uh, they said we did not have to go back to them.
Verbally or in writing?
Huh?
Did they do that to you in, in writing or verbally?
Uh, I forget if it was a phone call or an email, but I'm happy to provide whatever the board thinks is, thinks is appropriate.
Mr. Chair, through you, what I would like to see happen is continue this to our next meeting. We can put it on for a minor change. We can, you know, we can agree it's a minor change, but would, I would like to be, the board to be able to review the Tetra Tech review, uh, reports. And I would like to see something from, from Raising Cane's in, in a legal format that says that they are owning these and the maintenance of these pumps. And, uh, like the, um, inspectional services to review the grease trap location stuff, all that. And, um, Brendan's fine with these changes too? You, Brendan reviewed these? Has Brendan seen these?
Yeah. Yes, he has. He's generally okay with the, the concept of, uh, you know, any maintenance being owned by Raising Cane's. It's just, you know, a lot of, a lot of review went through to arrive to that sewer system, I, I believe, and looking at some of the old review comments. So, um, there will be one more final review that, um, meeting with him tomorrow to just kind of make sure that we hit everything and.
Okay, yeah, if you could, if you can make sure you cover that, then we can, I think we should be good to go. We could, if you want us, if you'd like me to make a motion tonight to agree that this is a minor, so we don't have to go through the public hearing and all that to prolong it even further, I, I'll make a motion tonight to agree that this is a, a minor change and that we will hear it at our next, uh, meeting.
I get a second to that motion? She made the motion. Can I get, can I get a second? Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
So you'll have all this information for us?
I, I was, yeah, I want to clarify. I got, we're gonna get you the, the maintenance agreement in writing, legal, so that's clear. That's the applicant's responsibility. What was the other items? I just want to make sure I, I didn't miss anything.
Um, we, these are from Tetra Tech, Steve Bulley. We want the, the board to review his findings on all of this. And then make sure that inspectional services has also reviewed this relocation of the grease trap.
Okay, so just from my end, we'll get you the legal maintenance agreement. Absolutely. Okay, just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Of the what?
Of this red line change?
Yeah, yeah, this is already, yeah, I can resend everything.
At that meeting, it might be helpful to just draw a red line in where the changes are to, just for the board.
Just on a, on a plan so that you can document and keep it on file.
You don't have to do a whole new plan. Just take a red marker.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks. Happy New Year. Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
I get a second on adjourned?
What's that?
To adjourn the meeting?
Oh, sure. I got something I want to say.
Okay, but we could.
I'll resend my motion to adjourn. We got five minutes.
Okay, very quickly. Uh, later this month, the oil field is having their meeting on, um, the, the property up here at the hotel, the parking garage and the Palumbo's. It's in tonight's, it's in tonight's item, the advertisement. And there's a couple of things that we should be aware of. They're talking about having two buildings, a six story and an eight story building with two lots. Now, for the best of my knowledge, nobody's come to us for asking for any kind of a, a lot separation.
I think the plan, and I don't know if there's an A and R of it, but I think there's three lots in total.
Well, the trouble is, there's no roadway to have frontage on. The roadway, and, okay, and that's, so they're talking about having, um, they're talking about one lot. They're talking about having one building for the affordable housing. You know, all affordable housing in one building, this exterior, that have mixed use, which is what falls under our barely work here in the other building. So I guess it may come down to asking legal, uh, legal people.
So they would have to present it?
They would have to come back to us.
And we could ask those questions to the ZBA?
Well, I, I'm planning going to that meeting. And as you know.
Thank you, sir.
There's, there's at least nine things, conditions that we put on those three buildings, the hotel, parking garage and the Palumbo building. There's at least nine conditions that we put on when, when we were ordered by the court to grant them the height allowance up there. And so the best, and a lot, and most of those conditions were protecting the back of the property for the residents on Forest Street. For the best of my knowledge, none of that's been done. And the new advertisement is saying that they're advertising a rear lot on, uh, Forest Street, 39R Forest Street. Now, my concern is if we're talking about having one building on a separate lot that would be mixed use. According to chapter 21, you can't access that by any other way other than Route 1 or 99. So I, I guess my concern is what's the plans for that 39 rear on Forest Street?
We have no idea because all the plans go to the ZBA. It's because it's listed as a 40B. I understand what you're saying. So those are the questions that we need to bring forward to the zoning board of appeals.
Last time Jesse was here, I asked him if those conditions that we, uh, and Gene, you've seen those, conditions on the Palumbo property.
Good night.
Good night, sir.
Good night.
I asked him if those were valid conditions. He said, yeah, they run with the land. They run with the land. It doesn't stop. And I'm, I believe that even 40Bs don't change a court's decision.
Well, we would, you would have to bring that.
I mean, these are questions that need to be legally sorted out.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but we as the planning board have no jurisdiction over a 40B. But to, if it's what you're saying, then I believe it might be different, but they haven't presented that to us yet?
I'm just saying.
You're right. No, I get you. I, I understand what you're saying.
And the, and the agro, uh, what do you call it? The local newspaper, the, uh, what is it? The agro?
Advocate.
Advocate, yeah. And there are. And their article backs a couple of months ago, they expressly said that they were going to put mixed use in one building, and the affordable housing in the other.
Yeah, so separate it.
Putting mixed use in one building is planning board, not affordable housing.
If they file it as a subdivision on the three different buildable lots. So they may get the 40B in, but they wouldn't...
They wouldn't be able to get the...
Yeah, due to article 21. So you have that down pretty well, so I expect that you might be going up, speaking to the ZBA.
So is it safe to say that you won't be at our next meeting? You'll be over there at their meeting, because it's the same night?
The same night.
No, it's different.
No, it's the same night.
Oh, same night? This was on the 15th.
Nope, it's on 16th over at the town hall. We'll give you a pass from this meeting if you want to go. Dead serious.
Why are they scheduling the same night that we are?
It never was. Or was it?
No, they, they usually meet on, I think, the third Thursday.
40B is separate.
40B is a separate meeting than their regular meeting, yeah. They're having a separate hearing for them, because they anticipate a lot of people, so they're having it at the town hall auditorium.
You mean, after my tirade tonight, I won't? I mean, I'll be...
We'll give you a pass. You can go to that meeting instead of us.
You want me to go to that meeting, don't you?
No, I would miss you terribly, Bob. What will I do with nobody to interrupt my motions?
I support your motions.
Yeah, I know. Usually you interrupt me three times, and then I don't even remember my motion, but...
Oh, make sure you're right.
Yes, you do keep me on my toes, so thank you. And on that note, I'm gonna make my favorite motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you all for coming, wishes all a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, John.